Let it be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fasting?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dahl?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
Stappas?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Okay, for the minutes. I like making the motions.
I make the motion for the minutes.
Any corrections or changes?
Lindsay?
Aye.
Stappas?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Fasting?
Yes. For communications, anybody have anything to bring forward? Well, I have one thing, and unfortunately I can't remember. Actually, I had a constituent drop this off, and this is only for discussion at this point, but it's in time that I want to be retiring. I'm the one to bring this up, so if you yell at the public, blame me. Compensation for school board members, if you take a look at this, it's got a huge number of school districts in our area, and I think you might find it kind of interesting, since I've been privy to this longer than any of you guys. Honestly, I really believe that you should consider raising school board wages from 600 for everybody to an even thousand, and I think that whoever is going to take this chair should probably go to about 1,200, because the president does get called upon quite regularly. The only suggestion, but I thought was interesting, because it came from a constituent that is very conservative, and they highly think that we should pay ourselves more, so take what brings salt.
When does that get reviewed?
Um, in May.
On our schedule inmate?
When we elect.
Yeah. When the new persons, more person takes over, so that's actually all I had.
If I could ask a question, and I'll ask you, Mr. Wayne, right, and it's going to be a two-part question, the second question will be answered by the first one. As of January 1st, has there been any form of bullying or harassment filed in the high school that you're aware of at all?
As of January 1st, I'm aware of one incident that's been reported.
Okay, and could we as a board discuss it in closed session?
Certainly could. We would need to note that's the reason we're going to closed session, but yes, it could be discussed in closed session.
That's the only question I have.
The news?
Denise, yep. Hi, I'm Rob DeGee, so I'm a grad student in the School of Education at UW-Madison. Some of you I've met, some of you have received communications from me, some of you may have heard my name, or that I've been around town the last couple of months. I wanted to tell you really briefly, just a second or two, what I'm doing here and why I'm standing in front of you for three minutes. But last week I was able to connect with Jeff, and he suggested I come down with the board meeting tonight to introduce myself, and I was going to stay till the very end of the meeting and say hi, and then he very kindly suggested that I might not want to do that, and that I might want to do it right away at the beginning, so thanks, Jeff. But anyway, I'm from Algonquin, Wisconsin, in the northeastern corner of the state, kind of by Green Bay, and am now a former high school social studies teacher in Evansville, Wisconsin, near Janesville, a couple minutes away from Janesville. And my PhD research focuses on school referendums around the state, so I travel between districts in various geographic areas of the state, and I interview people to better understand why voters vote the way they do on referendums, what gets them to vote yes, and what gets them to vote no. And the goal with all of this is hopefully something really practical, but it's to create a statistical tool that I would hand to people like you on the school board or a superintendent somewhere in the state, and have that spit back out a probability for whether their referendum would pass or not. So that's a little bit down the road, but basically I would love to speak with anyone and everyone who's willing to talk with me, but I think your perspective as both school board members and community members would be especially valuable for me to hear. So if I haven't already, I would love to have the opportunity to talk with you, and I do want to stress that this is anonymously through the agreement that I have with the university as a student there, I'm required to change everybody's name, I change the name of the city, I change the name of the district, or I make up names, or I simply drop your name from my research and say, and I talked to four people, and from what they've said, I've gathered three themes, and this is what they are. So that's a little bit about how I do that. I brought along with me two pages, one is basically just a summary of what I just said out loud, and the second thing that I brought along staple to it is a sample of what a page of my dissertation would look like, so that you can see what I'm doing with it, and how I've taken identities out, and so on. So Jeff, I don't know if this is something I should hand to directly, if that's right, or leave out of shares? Yeah, ten copies, that's great, former teacher. Okay, Rob, is that it? That's it, that's all I got, thanks. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, so we're going to move on. Board election timeline.
So we have hit the deadlines for candidates not running for office, and anybody interested. There are three seats up for this current, this current election. We have six interested parties. That was a magic number for us, a seventh would have forced us to have a primary, to eliminate one, to then go on, which would have been a cost out of our pocket of the district, so we're good there. We had Dr. Lindsay come in and draw lots for how names appear on the ballot, so that's already taken place, that information's been sent off to appropriate clerks.
Did you receive your email?
I think so.
Okay.
So we are on pace, looking at, let's see, I'll step out, we're looking at the candidate primary, or the candidate forum in early March, I believe, we're looking at a Wednesday in early March.
She was waiting on one person for confirmation.
So we, item number four on your agenda was consideration approval, resolution requiring primary election, you do not need that, because we don't have more than double the number of seats available. So as we move forward, we'll be looking at the elections in April, all right?
If you get sent out the lineup at this point?
We have to have that to the county offices tomorrow. We sent out to each of the candidates, just making certain that their names were correct as to how they appeared, but yes, we have the lineup, you want me to go get that, just so you know?
I would just be curious, but it'll come out later, don't worry about it.
Well, I can grab it.
Just email it to us tomorrow, be in line. Yeah, that's fine.
Tomorrow when it's confirmed, okay.
Budget comparison.
Looking at our budget at this point in time last year, coming through the first of the year, we had expended 42.36% of our district budget, so semester, kind of right around that 50%. And again, then at this point in time this year, we are at, we have expended 40.64%. Our budget, our original budget's a little bit higher, so you're looking at relatively similar location as to where we were a year ago. Our spending is kind of on par, we're not spending more money through the first semester, or spending less money, it's relatively even in a comparison between the years. Okay? Questions? No surprise expenses or anything for the first half of the year? No. Superintendent's knocking wood. First reading of our education for homeless children policy, I'd asked Angela Klein to speak on this.
So I am listed as the designee for our homeless children and youth, and so we've been doing, I've been doing some trainings and bringing my administrative assistant with me to some training at CISA, and one of the most glaring things that we're lacking is we don't have a policy, and you have to have a policy. So we reached out to WASB, DPI also provides several model policies, so this is kind of a combination of the two. The first page is really straightforward, it's pretty much the language and the state's statutes, and then it goes into what we call a rule, and when Angie and I looked into it, a rule is basically the guidance that it gives, the oversight of what it does. So it does things like names the director of special education and people services as the district liaison for that, there's a database with the state, it outlines basically all of the steps that we take if a student is identified as homeless or an unaccompanied youth, so they have things like, do we immediately enroll them without having access to records? We talk, you know, it kind of lays it all out, but everything is there. The biggest part of the policy that the state is telling us is we have to have a, last page it is Mitch, basically a procedure that if they want to dispute the determination decision, that was the biggest part that was stressed to us, is we needed to have that dispute resolution laid out. So our steps are listed on that last page. Basically, I created a dispute form, again, came from some sample copies, but it would come to me, I would give that, I would give that dispute resolution notice, if they disagree, it would then move up to the district administrator, who could meet with the person, and he would give his notice within 10 days as well, and then if the family still disputes the results, then it would move up to the dispute form that's with Department of Public Education and oversaw by them. And they needed it in writing, so that if there was a dispute, basically the DPI comes in and says, did you follow the procedure that was established? So that was really the biggest part we wanted put in to this, and then just kind of in general, we've been doing little things along the way, we're collecting, we're trying to do a better job of disseminating information for, in the community and to our families for their rights if they are identified as a homeless child or an unaccompanied youth. We added some stuff to the website over the summer to identify, or as resources for families, Elaine's been putting together some resource available in Iowa County, those types of things, so that we're just better prepared for anybody who may need it.
Thank you. I shared this with the policy committee, they had an opportunity to read it, they felt everything was pretty clear and straightforward, and recommended the first reading. I would say a lot of these things are currently, or were currently practices that the district was doing as well.
Absolutely, other than the dispute form, I don't think anything is necessarily new, it's everything that's been done, or is being done, or is told to us that needs to be done by guidance, we just needed to put it in a written form, so that it was listed in our policies.
Any questions regards to this policy? We would bring it back next month for a second reading, and then because the policy will be placed in the board policy book.
Angie, assume at this point we don't have any homeless?
Yes, we do.
We do.
So average statewide is about 4%, couldn't tell you off the top of my head how many we have, but we have multiple families.
Because the definition of a homeless child is?
So in order to be homeless, you have to have, you have to lack fixed adequate housing, so it could be situations where they're doubled up living with relatives, because they have no permanent residence of their own, it could be that their home is, you know, a camper, and in the winter they don't have running water, I mean, there's anything, there's criteria that goes through it, so it's a little broader than what you would think. But yes, we have students, and we always have had students who are identified, so we're just trying to make sure that we do a better job of documentation for those students and families.
Thank you. Anybody else have any question? Tim, could you give a short update for the audience?
Absolutely. So we have a short little PowerPoint of where we're at, we talked about a lot of this just prior, so I won't dwell on any of it in particular, just wanted to review the schedule here, talk a little bit about bid alternates, and then just review the current planning. We are nearing the end of the planning stages for the project, we are looking to send this out very shortly, in the next basically month and a half here. So overall schedule, we're final review coordination time period, we're going to the state on 2/4 for final review, as well as we're sending out documents on 2/13, so releasing it, we're doing a pre-contractor walkthrough on 2/20, and we're receiving bids on 3/5 as our anticipated date for that to happen, so it'll start coming pretty quickly, it's at a perfect timeframe to be bidding a project like this. We talked a little bit about alternates before this, bid alternates are very common to construction projects, basically it really has a bid day, it allows us flexibility to fine tune the budget to maximize needs and wants for the project itself. The advantage of it is it's still through a competitive bidding process, so we can very much get competitive pricing and get good numbers, and then they're able to hold those numbers, and we're able to basically fine tune that as the project progresses, as we know more financially. Very common for this process, we want to be aware of what those alternates are, and making sure that they're not overly complicated as we go through this process, we don't want to limit competition by saying an alternate is just too hard to achieve either. So some potential alternates that we talked about beforehand, the northern parking lot, for the staff parking lot, to repave that as a potential alternate, adding windows to the cafeteria is a potential alternate, replacing the finishes and casework in the art and music room, we were planning a one-for-one replacement of both finishes and casework of multiple spaces, that's something that we really like to do, but like all days, it has a financial impact as well. Matt Boyce's scoreboard, that's potentially an alternate, and then the 1991-era restroom finishes for a consistency, replace those as well, is a potential alternate. What you won't see on here is kind of key components, like air conditioning of the building, or eliminating windows to classrooms, or something like that, that's just a key characteristic. We tend to put alternates as pretty straightforward ones, that's something that we can fine tune as a continuing conversation. In a perfect world, I'd like to accept all those, that's our goal. Review the site plan here, so this should look pretty familiar if you've been involved, but we are proposing the new entryway to the south, drop-off pickup, the arrows show basically the one-way loop that we're proposing, very efficient process in that area, in trying to both maximize the playable area, the green space, and make it more safe and more user-friendly. We are basically relating all the drop-off to this parking lot, so efficiency is a key characteristic of it, and just the parking itself there. On the right-hand side, we're in conversations about adding some visitor parking, so this would be basically 15-minute parking or something like that, right off the main entry, and what that'll also control is limit people from dropping off right on that street, and really promoting the use of the parking lot. We are also adding the handicap parking right at the main entry doors, for the similar reasons, also for convenience. Floor plans, we have copies in front of you, it should be at the point where what's changed and not much has changed, and that's a good thing, and makes sure that we're continuing progressing in the more development, so the documents are getting pretty thick right now, and that's a good thing, so I just want to give these more for reference than anything. That's all I have for update. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, we're going to move on to action items for approval of number of regular and special education spaces available.
So you have policy that, as a guideline, we look at, you know, pre-K through third grade, looking at 18 students per room, 4 through 6, 20, 7, 12, 25, certainly at the 7, 12 building, we'll go a little bit higher than that, but these are things that we try to stay with. So you have open enrollment things, and again, I will share this, I'll have Angela speak to the special education open enrollment, and if you have questions, I would encourage you to ask. Her son is competing in the Dorian Choir Festival, and it's streaming live, so when she's done with us, she's going to step out and try to watch the streaming episode of the Mineral Point Choir kids out there, so I will turn over the floor to Angela again.
So basically, as a department, we went through and kind of named the ideal number of students per caseload by grade, similar to you guys do for class size, so that's the first side, the first half of that, EC and early elementary K-1 are eight students per caseload, second, third, fourth, second, third grade is also eight, I'm sorry, and then third and fourth, or fourth and fifth grade increases up to about 10 middle school, about 12 per teacher, again, we have two teachers at the middle school, and then the high school is up to about 15 per teacher, again, we have two teachers at the high school. So looking at those numbers with projections of students on current caseloads, enrolling everybody forward, we're left with the seats open, one at the early childhood level, three at the K-1 level, four at the 2, 3 level, three at the 4, 5 level, nine at the middle school, and seven at the high school. And then the additional thing is because of how we contract our services, we did close the program open, the program is being recommended to close for vision impairment, hearing impairment, because we contract those services with an outside vendor, and we don't want to incur any additional costs. The other change that we are recommending, that Mitch and I are recommending, is we actually removed the stipulation, last year we had closed open enrollment for any students who received related services of physical therapy or occupational therapy, and we took that away this year. The state has changed some of the formula, so there's the potential that if students moved in, who did need those related services, we would be able to recoup some of that money to offset the cost of taking them, so.
This does not include options enrollment?
Options is not special education, we have some students at options with special education needs, but options is a regular high school, it's just an alternative program for a high school student, so a person, a student at options would apply through regular open enrollment and could potentially be affected with special education if they had a special education plan, but not every student at options is identified as special education.
Okay, thank you. And this is purely people that apply through open enrollment to cover?
Yeah, if they're already in, it does not affect them, they're already in, the board does not, the rule says you could have to apply one time, like if you've changed schools or something, we don't do that, so if you already enrolled in Mineral Point, this does not affect you, it only affects the students and the families who would be potentially applying for next year.
The other thing it does not address is people that move into the district. So you could set your open enrollment numbers, you could agree to these numbers, but then if we have families that move in, with students that need some of these services?
We actually had a number move in last year, correct?
We did, and that's, that's part of the rationale for why we do it, is we're currently still having evaluations go on, we'll continue to have evaluations for eligibility all year, and so we're also projecting that we're going to take some students in just through the natural move-in process, and we had several students move in this year, as we always do. If you recall to last year, last year we actually closed all of the programs, so this is back a step, and a step in the right direction of making sure we have space available.
And we have to set it here, and then we knew we were hiring two staff members, but we couldn't accept any open enrollment, because we had to set this policy, set this amendment in January.
And last year, we, I even called up to DPI and said, so we had set this in January, and it was March, and we decided, and they said, unless you guys have a, in the policy that you can go back and make a wait list, that was the only way to do it, it was how the policy was written, so, but yeah, this is.
Do we want to amend the policy now, so that if we were to?
I would have to go back and look at that email about what part or how the policy was written, about how they would recommend it, I know what we did look at was basically, I went back through and looked about how your criteria is if we have more applicants than what we have spots, you have criteria laid out, so preference is given to any students who have siblings in this school, and then it goes into a, so you do have some, have a couple steps into how priority is given if there's a wait list, and so we would fall back to that.
And that's already in policy?
That is already in the policy, so I checked for that tonight.
Yeah, if you want to do it all at one time, because then we have open enrollment recommendations for regular ed students, in red, basically we're closing those off, we're at 60 students in the third grade, that's 20 students per classroom.
I had a clarification question, so these are current third-grade kids, so there's currently 60 kids in the third grade, or is this projected for next year?
There's currently 60 students in the second grade, and we have rolled those numbers forward.
Got it, so this is, this is projection for next year?
Correct.
Okay, so should that say 2021 then?
At the top it should, yes.
Okay.
And then what that eighth grade would be in that same book, the eighth grade would be closed, and again, this is just open enrollment numbers.
And this is where, if we had a family move in with three kids and one was in third grade, you could consider moving, or opening that up for that one?
If they're, if they're?
If they're moving here, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was just going to ask, that?
And we typically don't split families, but?
Motion to accept the special education open enrollment and regular general education enrollment?
One second.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just curious about the no limit, right, school, has that been historically what we've done, or? Yes, and the reason is, I might have, I might have 60 kids in the freshman class, but I can offer three sections of freshman English, so all of a sudden, the number in the room isn't at 30 anymore, so you can create? Four sections in different classes and electives, you can move kids around, I got you, that makes sense. Correct, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stappas?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Fasting?
Yes.
And then let Mitch that, I'm going to leave, if you guys want anything else today?
Absolutely.
Thanks. Okay, second reading, filling board vacancies.
So at the last meeting, when we had our first reading, it was recommended that, basically this, did it not get in here? The language was asked that a candidate must receive a vote to move on to the next round, and I could have swore I put that in here, but basically that would be the only change to this policy for the second reading, was that, so if in the first round somebody did not receive a vote, they would not be part of the second round, and I must have attached that or put that? Is that an earlier page? No, I would have put it right in this same highlighted area, so I must have sent the wrong attachment forward, but we will make sure that that language is in for the second reading, that candidate must receive a vote in order to move from one round to the next. In the event of a, in the event of a tie, which we go to closed session, correct? To discuss it? Yes, yeah, so after, if after two rounds of voting, no candidate's received the majority of the vote, school board will adjourn to closed session, discuss any of the remaining candidates qualifications.
And then Mitch, that I'm gonna leave the debate going anyway for anything else today.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay, second reading, filling board vacancies.
So at the last meeting, when we had our first reading, it was recommended that basically this, did it not get in here? The language was asked that a candidate must receive a vote to move on to the next round and I could have swore I put that in here. But basically that would be the only change to this policy for the second reading was that, so if in the first round, somebody did not receive a vote, they would not be part of the second round. And I must have attached that or put that...
Is that an earlier page?
No, I would have put it right in this same highlighted area.
Okay.
So I must have sent the wrong attachment forward. We will make sure that that language is in for the second reading that candidate must receive a vote in order to move from one round to the next.
In the event of a, in the event of a tie, which we go to closed session, correct?
Yes.
To discuss it?
Yeah. Yeah. So after, if after two rounds of voting, no candidate has received the majority of the vote, school board will return to closed session, discuss any of the remaining candidates qualifications. On returning, could ask questions if you want. So none of those things have changed. It was just that adding clarification that you had to have, receive a vote in order to move from one round to the next.
Since nobody's heard a speaker against it, I make a motion, we approve the second, the policy 133, filling board vacancies.
Second.
Any other comments?
I have one comment, sorry Jeff. I still don't like that we end up with a random drawing at any point with this policy, but I was thinking more about it. And I mean, let's say we do a ranking vote where you, let's say there's two candidates left and there's, there's one vacancy, so there's six board members, right? So let's say you rank, let's say you rank one candidate number one, rank the other candidate number two, and three people want one candidate, three people want the other candidate, and they rank, you know, you could still end up with stalemate if it's down to two candidates, even if you try to rank them. So I mean, I think that there's, there's still a situation where you're going to end up with a random vote. So even though we don't specify that we only go to random vote in that one particular case, I like the fact that we go to closed session and be able to kind of highlight, you know, pros and cons and, and try to find a good fit for the, for the board as a whole. So I think that's a good addition and it puts the random vote to a little more of a down the road. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it, but that's what I was, you know, because I wrestled with it last time and I thought about proposing a different idea, but that's why I didn't make it.
It's amazing that there were all the suggestions from Bob Miller or the state or anybody.
Had similar policies.
Yeah, basically it went to random.
Any of the updates from Wozniak, any of the different pieces from Wozniak, all referenced, a random, you know, after five rounds, after 10 rounds, and we don't want to be here for 10 rounds and then...
In the discussion, I think, we'll figure, you know, figure it out in the discussion.
Okay, Angie, let's call a question, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stennis?
Yes.
Basti?
Yes.
Board of Cruise Capital Projects.
In your board packet, I think it's attached here, in your board packet, it lists basically coming out of the operations committee, kind of a rank order for, for items to be used from the Fund 46. And I had shared in my last update, kind of where that dollar amount stands right now. Purchasing the land is a, is a given, that was something that the board had already agreed upon doing out of that fund. So that was number one. And then through discussions, looked at where do we go from here? The emergency doors on the very north end of the gym, if you get a chance sometime on the outside, you can look at, they're rusting, they're not going to keep elements outside any longer. And that was the second item of importance to be replaced, would be those eight doors on the north end of the gym.
And they were going to be a different door that withstands the elements?
Correct.
Correct. That was what I...
I want to say it was almost like a fiberglass base door instead of a metal door. So they wouldn't, you wouldn't have their rusting with salt and freeze and thaw with ice and getting in there. And then we came back to some conversations we'd had earlier in the year, adding some lights to the gravel parking lot. It is an area that's used especially heavily during football season and was something that we could control when the lights are on and off. But lighting that area would, would probably take two poles. Talked about putting them on the north side of that parking lot facing them south so that the Maguires don't have to worry about somebody being able to see into their living room or something from the parking lot. Also then block topping both that gravel parking lot, we had an earlier price bid of about $54,000. And then the main driveway, so basically when you come in off of Ross, so from that stop sign, the main drive all the way through to the stop sign that goes out to East Lake Road, we have a bid of about $142,000. When Roger spoke to the company, you know, if we were able to do both of these projects together, potential cost savings. And they said, yeah, there'd be some kind of a cost savings. So instead of $196,000, it might be less. How much less, I don't know, but we would...
Two grand less at best.
Yeah, maybe.
And that was part of that discussion was like, are we gonna do it or we wanted to kind of get numbers before we made any decision?
Have we, have we thought about that?
Yes. Roger is trying to contact somebody that, that does that to kind of get an idea what would a price be to do that same stretch. I know there was, some of the information he got was like one of our bad corners or bad spots is this corner here where semis and buses are turning and the load spins a little bit more. And if it's concrete, there was a thought that it would need to be, I want to say a minimum of six inches of concrete poured on top of the blacktop. So, and they would not, they would not take out the current blacktop, they would just simply come in and pour over the top. So I think still trying to get a, I don't know if Roger has a price for that right now, but that would be one way to address that, that troubled area on the drive. So he is exploring that, trying to get some...
That's pretty nice because Dr. Self, well, I think Roger's trying.
Okay.
Because I just gave names and stayed out of it. I know that my son-in-law is known all over the country because he's pour cement, concrete over top of blacktop for like five years now. You don't have that maintenance cost. It might be just a little bit more than, it's my understanding it's very close in price, but then you don't have the maintenance. You have 30 years of maintenance free, so you would more than recoup your money in the long run, you'll save money, but...
They pour right over, they exist in blacktop by themselves, I wonder, and that creates some drainage issues and...
Exactly. I was wondering too.
Well, I like the idea of removing the blacktop.
All I know is that the Jeep thing, he's got concrete, people calling them all over the country. I don't know if they use a special type of concrete, I don't know. I have corrected myself through terms on concrete because you don't say cement to a concrete. I'm like, how does that cement work?
So this, this bid, Mitch, was from the stop sign on Ross Street all the way to the stop sign down over the hill. Yeah, yeah.
Does not count for just, just the main lane?
It's just the main lane.
Not the parking lot.
Right.
Just, just the main.
Roger, was that any feedback on this? I think I have a copy of the bid in my office that would maybe give us the distance. Off the top of my head, I don't know what that distance is. I'm just curious.
So the purpose of this on here tonight, is there a timeline with this Fund 46? We have to make a decision?
We, you have to have an approved plan as to what you're looking at spending your money on. There's nothing that says you have to spend it. You could pick one project. You could say, no, we're not doing anything yet this year. We're gonna wait. But, but you have to have approved projects for this money. And the one and only that you have right now is the land purchase.
Okay. And then the balance of Fund 46 will just roll into next year or interest, just like we have been?
Yes, and you can continue to add to it. You, you could conceivably spend it all down and then turn around, put some money in if there was budget monies left over last and turn around, spend that money right away. Once you've established the fund and it has been in existence for five years, that's when you can start to spend the money.
Right.
And any money, and any money added in can be spent at any time. It doesn't need another five-year wait period.
What percentage of the current fund needs to have a plan approved in order for us to use it?
I don't think it has to be 100%. You don't have to say, here's how we're spending 100% of the funds. You just have to say, these are the, these are areas that we know for capital maintenance projects that we wish to spend money on. Here's what we're getting, so.
And does the state give you the approval? Or do you have to have approval from the state?
You just have to share with them what your plan is. They don't have to say, yep, we agree with this.
Well, I'm sure there must be some way that if Dr. Dunn is the guy at the state and we put something on here that isn't considered capital, he's gonna be calling us saying, I know you can't do that one.
Correct.
So I mean, as long as it's capital expense, I just think we'd have no problem.
I'd also like to see us upgrade the bathroom facilities in here, both men's and the girls'. It's, they're kind of outdated really. I think it's sort of 26 years old now. When you go to other gyms and other facilities, I mean, the mirrors are kind of like the fun house mirrors, you know, where you go there and say, who is that? I mean, they're, they're pretty poor shape really.
The other two items, and there's, we've been, we're in some negotiations, replace the girls locker room floor. There's a vinyl rubberized flooring in there. It's been there, as Everett said, about the bathrooms 26 years now. There's been places where it's been pulled up. We've been able to patch places, but water can get underneath, it's cracking. We replaced the high school boys locker room with a, with a new floor, an epoxy floor. And the recommendation would be to do the same thing in the girls locker room, high school girls locker room. That's where we're having some of our biggest issues.
Mold.
Mold is a potential that could grow underneath the...
I thought it was under that one spot that was replaced, wasn't it?
Under where it was replaced and that's been, that's been taken out and, and fixed, addressed and now new has been put over. And then the last one would be to paint the gymnasium, the middle school, high school gymnasium, just paint that right now. We know we need to basically strip the floor, repaint the floor and reseal it, but that we would put on a later proposal. These all total up to be, there's about $693,000 in Fund 46. This is about half of that dollar amount. And again, you don't have to do all of these.
I, I'll be honest, I think, I think we all know that that driveway needs to be addressed. I'm absolutely in favor of their doors and the gym, but I have a hard time seeing the need for lights and blacktop in that other parking lot. I think, my opinion only, that I think we need to see how this referendum process goes and I think we need to keep as much money in this balance. If we can use it, if that referendum goes over, we got access to the money.
I can see about the, not blacktopping, but the lights are important because it's pretty dark back there in the park.
We all got cell phones, we can use lights.
All you need is one person to fall down and then you're gonna be spending millions of dollars instead of 16,000.
Yeah, I brought this up originally because I got some things from older people. They said it was a hazard for them and that they were worried about treatment. There were several older people.
Well, I've got a comment about that. That parking lot gets used maybe, maybe four times throughout the year where the other parking lots are, are overfilled.
Well, I think much more than that, because you've got wrestling matches, you've got football.
The big tournaments.
Oh my God, it's used a lot.
Condoms, wrestling, regional wrestling, all of our high school basketball tournaments.
It's just absolutely filled up. Several more.
I mean, we brought up, I brought up the, the fact of our bleachers. I mean, our bleachers do not need state code if we were to build a new school now. And if we want to prioritize what's safe and what's not safe, when you see an 85-year-old grandmother trying to maneuver up over the bleachers without a handrail.
I agree with you.
That is so much more unsafe than a dark parking lot, which is not completely dark. There is, there is a light out on the street.
Yeah, but if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do anything with those bleachers, you better replace them all.
And can't you put, can't you put seating on the bottom? Handcapped to older people, just cement it on the bottom?
Replacing the bleachers, but at that time, we just had these steps, railings.
I think what, I think what she's saying though is by the time you add steps and railings, you're gonna be three quarters of the price of probably new ones.
Well, I, I simply don't know.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't know, but I think...
Because we talked about that, those candy cane kind of...
It's worth investigating. And you know, we almost started with pairing apples to apples. Let's, let's address the more unsafe things first.
Yeah, just so you know, it was a number of older folks that at least contacted me about the lack of lights there because it's hazardous for getting around.
And you're talking 16,000 dollars. You're not talking 150 or 40 here. 16,000 dollars to prevent anyone getting hurt is not, not a lot.
But I agree with the gymnasium steps are not, not the best, that's for sure.
The master plan of the athletic field, it's in the plan that the board adopted, has a track around the athletic field. And where that parking lot sits was, was designated for track and field area, long jump, high jump, floating and that kind of thing. So that's something the board should address. If we're gonna forget about a trap, potential track and a program here in Mineral Point, I mean, we should not have spent 54, 16, 7,000 dollars and then 10 years later rip it up.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Just, just something that's, that's been, been around since I've been around here on the floor.
So that was in the original plan or that?
Um, when the, the football field was finally moved up here. Back 26 years ago, I don't know what they had that in that board.
Yeah, I have no clue.
But Doug Durn, Durn, Durn has that in his plan.
I think, I've got some of those boards still in my office, as much as I'd love to throw them all out because they're taking up space. But I think there's some things, potential high jump on the north side by the scoreboard, you know, they would blacktop that and have high jump there. Long jump, there was ones potential that was running kind of north and south on this side of the football field. But I think it was, there one of the boards might have had something out in there. It might have been a field event, you know, shot put or something, discus, something of that nature out that way as well.
And this was a surplus of funds that the board did not need, didn't have to use. And a great way to use these funds is to pay back the taxpayers, that's actually their money, and we put a track on the football field. Great way to, to have, have the community come here, use a track, run the track, exercise whatever they want to do.
What's the numbers in track now, the number of kids in track?
We have kids who are pumped with states, like every year.
I think we have, I think it was about, I think it was, probably about 26 boys and girls.
So with Dallas, I wonder how many are arms, so to speak.
About 26.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. That's what, that's the number that we had last year. But it, it varies because of the interest of freshmen coming in every year.
A great program.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Anything can be added back on, it's just a...
Can this money be used in case we're short down the elementary? I didn't think we could shift this money.
We could shift it towards a parking lot, couldn't we? Capital maintenance, that would be north parking lot.
The storage shed.
The storage shed.
That north parking lot's gonna be a busted up mess. By the time they're through with the renovation.
It was not in good shape.
Yeah, I'm sure it already is.
They're running, they're running water in across it also. How long, how long ago was Glenn on the board? Because I think that came up at that time and it was put on hold with the idea that something was going to be taking place down there, whether it was a referendum or...
It's been on three years.
So I would probably say four or five years ago, then that parking lot was brought up, you know, do we seal code and do we, and at that time, the board decided not to, knowing either, you know, a referendum would bring it up here or a referendum would do something down there at which time it would be addressed. But you're right, that parking lot...
That's been on the, that's been on the bucket for a long time.
So this, this money...
And it's probably a good thing we waited with the issue on the renovation.
So I mean, money's out of here, could go to that, you know, even think when you talk about the bid alternatives of bathroom fixtures. It's capital maintenance, you know, so depending on how the budget comes in, do we replace all the bathroom fixtures, you know, Fund 46 monies could certainly be used towards something along that line too, maintaining the buildings.
Maybe it'd be worthwhile to spend some money, see what it would cost to make the gym safer, you know, to get somebody to give us a bid.
I, I thought we were gonna do that, but...
I thought so too.
My suggestion would be, because I've heard some positives, maybe do the land, the doors on the gym and the main driveway blacktop only, which is about 235,000. It doesn't mean it's gonna be done, but we have to get a plan in place.
And Roger needs time to, to get estimates. Some of these are, we already have estimates for. The, the key piece will be with your approval. Now we can get ahold of these people and try to line up the work to be done so that it fits within our time schedule.
I, I'll support that, Jeff. The only thing I, more, more answers for is the locker room. The boys locker room, Mitch, was that about a $30,000 expense?
From what...
From what Roger said at that meeting, that was, the price was, was very comparative. But he said this price did not include, this one didn't include the.
Removal.
Removal. And so this, this particular one, I call it docked on, it was driving me crazy after this meeting for thirty thousand dollars. And how, how much corn do you have to sell to make thirty thousand dollars? A lot, right? So, if it ta, I, and of course, this is, my mind goes this way all the time, but I'm thinking, okay, these booster clubs want all this money for nothing, right? They go and, no offense to whoever on camera, but they go and try to solicit funds from everybody. So why don't we get a booster club to say, look, with, with guidance and the proper knowledge, and get somebody on board that knows maybe a little bit of something about this. Mitchell Boys might know something about this, they did foreign forever. Get in there, get a dozen kids from a club, strip up the floor, and paint on epoxy. I mean, it's, it's not rocket science. I mean, for thirty thousand dollars, we keep this in-house, maybe it doesn't cost us thirty thousand dollars, and we put that money right back towards something else. All these clubs want a new gym, they, or not a new gym, they want a new weight room, they want new this, new this, new this. Well, this is, why can't we do that? Same thing with the painting of the high school gym. I mean, the walls, I mean, obviously the, if, does the ceiling need to be repainted? Ceiling does too.
It would be, yes.
Okay, so that's included in there? That was one of the questions that I did have, because, I mean, fifteen kids with paint rollers, eighteen-inch knapskin cover a lot of wall in a gym, in a gym room.
Just remember epoxy is.
Yeah, and then remember if, if they have to be up high.
On a lift?
Lift or scaffolding, you gotta be careful.
And again, I'm just, this is just the way my mind works, and, you know, I mean, it would give, to an extent, give kids some kind of workout that can say, look, we just accomplished this gym room floor in a week for thirty thousand dollars. Oh, well, wait, there's a trade that maybe somebody might wanna get into. Of course, that's just my mind, but.
I don't, I don't think, and Mitchell's does not do epoxy, so I don't know if they'd even be able to give advice. Yeah, I don't know if they could or not.
And that's the thing, we've had a lot of alumni through Winter Point, through basketball, through wrestling. Somebody, I would assume, out of one of these clubs, somewhere down the line that graduated, might know something about it. I mean, we've got people in every different field around the country, somebody would know something about it.
So you're saying we should kick the locker room and the P team?
Not kick it, but maybe kick it down the road and maybe.
A month or two.
Yeah, maybe try to, I don't know.
I have a problem.
Incentivize some of these organizations that, you know, hey, look, this is, and they can come in here in ten years and say, I helped do that, or I helped do that, or, look, we made this much money for, towards a new weight room. I don't know, yeah, just a thought.
It does seem like a lot of money, thirty thousand.
Does match for a lot of money.
You also have to remember those, you have to remember it has to be done to code.
I, I understand.
Has to, you know, are you gonna have guarantee on it? If we do it ourselves, there's no guarantee. You know, those kind of things you have to figure out too. Yeah, it's nice to do it yourself, and I think that's great. So you save ten thousand dollars, but then something happens to the floor, and then we have to end up fixing it, and it costs us another twenty-five.
And that's, I understand, that's why, again, it's just an idea that.
Yeah, I, I get you.
That if we had the right.
But we always have to be code, that's number one.
Well, then, yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, we have a budget and we haven't spent ten thousand on the patching floor.
No.
You don't have me.
I know.
Put a code.
The locker floor.
Even if you reported on it.
Put us the one in there now code then?
But I would imagine it would have been code at the time.
It has to have been.
Yeah, you have to have building.
Yeah, I think the price and then, the doors are ridiculous. I think people are pocketing a bunch of money off us, but what do you do with it? Then doors got a jump.
And probably when the doors went in, I don't even know if they had a blast.
We've had that fight for the last six years, we were replacing these doors up, up front here too. It's ridiculous.
How bad is the middle school, high school gym?
How bad is it?
Painted wise, painted, I haven't.
It, it's serviceable, I mean.
It seems, it looks nice to me.
And we've had kids paint, we've had kids paint the lower section of it in the past. We've had summer work, you know, kids that have just take the roller and get up.
You know, a question, a question I had, Mitch, has it, has the ceiling ever been professionally cleaned? I mean, cleaned down, washed down?
Professionally?
Yeah.
No, I mean, by our own staff, yes.
Right. And how do you guys clean it?
They, they have a two-man lift, they get up there, they have compressors and they wipe it down. They, they can get in there and blow all, they blow all the dust and stuff off of there, yeah. About every, it used, they used to do it every year when they used to have to set the scaffolding up, and it would take them even longer now with the two-man lift. They've been basically kinda, every other year, getting up there and really cleaning off everything that's up there, the top of the vent on the west wall and, and all of the rafters. Now, they, the staff takes great pride in their ability to clean and maintain it.
So I just thought of something, moving forward in these big dollar items, it might be wise of the board to use somebody like Tim. It's gonna cost us a little money, but instead of just laying down a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in the blacktop that we're not sure the base is good underneath it, they, they do projects like this, a thirty, a twelve, thirty thousand dollar locker room floor. Tim would help us on that kind of thing.
At what cost, I guess?
I, I understand.
I like about the square footage of the.
It's like, why should it have been the dark area? I don't, you wanna know the square footage?
Well, I mean, what is the square footage of the, of the girls locker? You then compare that to the price, it's probably not that big a difference. You know, it's not a ten by ten.
Yeah, so then you compare.
Well, it's too bad Roger isn't gabbing, Nate and I met with Roger to kinda put this ranking list together.
Sure.
And, you know, sort of the locker room floor goes, I mean, I, I think Nate's idea is a good one, and I think it's fine to explore all the questions that were asked here, you know? Can it be done? Who's an expert on it? What's our code, you know, requirements? Can we meet those by doing a piecemeal kind of project together? And I think it's fine exploring that, if we decide to do that at this meeting. But, I mean, we met with Roger and, you know, he's thought about this for a long time. He had the company that did the boys locker room, and he got quotes from two different companies that do it. And he said one company was, he had worked with us in the past and wasn't as excited about working with them again just because of their, I think, their lack of responsiveness or something like that on certain issues. And then the other one, he got good responsiveness from, but the quote didn't include the floor, the piecemeal floor. So, he's explored it. I don't know if there's five companies in southern Wisconsin that do locker room floors in schools, you know, with epoxy. I mean, it seems like it's a pretty niche market if even Mitchell's don't do it. You know, if a flooring company doesn't do epoxy, you know, it must be a specialized item, yeah. I mean, it'd be, it's supposed to be certified to handle certain chemicals, you know, but that's.
I used a company out of the cross when I.
Tranburgs, wasn't there Tranburg from Monmouth area there?
Yes, listed.
I know the name, we're gonna have a grant, but I don't.
And Ladies from Darlington, Larry, Ladies have their shop floor, done with that.
Always in a bicycle.
Yeah.
I mean, Nate, do you, somebody, Larry or.
That's a couple.
Somebody's motion, you, your motion for.
I'll, I'll make some calls.
I'll make some suggestions. The chimney doors to the driveway.
Sorry, Jeff, say that again. I'm sorry, I had to bring in a few, I was trying to keep it in. I just, I'm waiting for a motion. I am suggesting that we do the purchase of the land, the gym doors and the driveway.
One, two, four?
One, two, and only part of, yeah, four.
I will make that motion.
So sixty-four, it's roughly two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, just to get.
The main driveway is five.
No, it's a double four.
Oh, I'm sorry. What is a double four?
So just the main driveway?
Just the main driveway, but that's only my suggestion.
I think he just.
So Gary, Gary, for, for one, two, and four?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Four, part B, actually.
There you go.
So not the gravel parking lot?
Not the gravel parking lot.
This is just to approve them and then we can start seriously getting.
Yep. So it's one, so, so we are doing those, I'm making that motion, so we are doing these for sure. Obviously the land, we know that's done.
Did you get a second?
Agreed, agreed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yep. Can we add things, how long does it, does it have to be approved, or can this just happen at any time?
Yeah, we can start to add things to the list at any time.
This is an adequate start, wouldn't you say?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, it doesn't negate the rest, it's just later, they might have to come up for approval. The rights, start small and go big.
So this gives Roger the, the ability to talk to the company that will replace the gym doors and say, okay, get them ordered, get, you know, whatever.
Do us the best you possibly can.
And then he can continue to work with the cement option versus the blacktop option and get us, get us the better. But we at least, we know we're moving forward and fixing that problem before the start of the next school year.
This is only putting things in motion.
Correct.
I mean, they still, you will still have to bring each one of these back to the board for final approval. And period, it's gotta complete.
It's two-hundred-and-thirty-five on that?
I did.
Okay.
One, twenty-two, sixty-four, and twenty-nine.
And Gary had a good point. In, in less than two months, we're gonna know where we stand at the elementary school with, through that bid process.
I don't know if we'll know until that, until the new part is done and they get into the renovation part. Because remember, we're, we're doing the new first, renovation is second. That's my only concern is, once the new part's done, they have us, we're committed to the second part then. Now, I know Tim said they've got, Tim has told us that they've got, you know, plenty budget in for the what if, but he has never once stood here and said, we know for a fact that we can do this, and there's gonna be no problem. So that's my only concern, I don't wanna see this money gone, and then two years down the road, we say, oh boy.
When I was referring to the alternative.
Yes.
Oh, the alternative is, okay, yeah.
I think what we're deciding on is regardless of.
Four, four fifty.
We want to leave these things down.
Yes. The driveway has been.
Oh, it's bad.
It's been on.
It's nobody's fault, it's just.
It's weird there.
Twenty-five years old.
We have a motion on the floor, correct?
Correct.
And seconded, right?
Correct.
That needs to be voted up. There's no discussion after a motion has been made and seconded.
No discussion?
No, there isn't, that's why you discuss.
There is discussion.
There is discussion.
After it's been, no, after it's been moved and seconded?
Yes, you have to have a second.
Oh, the moment that, then you discuss, I'm sorry.
But we were discussing. You guys are always so, so you give it a discussion. Yeah, okay, so let's call a question.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dog?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stephus?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Item number four can be tabled because you don't need to have.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I think we still need a couple more kind of action plans for the rest of that list. One being Nate was gonna explore the girls locker room project. Unless there's an argument that these don't need to be done.
Yeah, I think the assumption is that.
Oh, I don't know.
I'd be honest, I haven't been in the girls locker room.
We went in there. Yeah, and it does, it, it is, it needs, it needs a, it needs some kind of.
It's somewhat embarrassing.
But you're not authorizing the funding of it, you're just saying to go forward with investigation.
Correct.
I mean, so essentially.
And also, Title Nine, you need to have similar facilities and quality of facilities for girls as well as boys.
Yeah, I think.
So essentially, we need this on there.
If anybody would push it.
Right, I don't think, so the question's not whether to do it, the question is, should we do it in-house or not?
Well, and, and so realistically, this should almost be approved to say, hey, look, we need this, we need this done, right? I mean, so we almost need to add this on because, look, we need to get it done.
So you wanna make a motion?
It depends, and we'll decide how it's gonna be.
Exactly, this is just approving that, yes, we're, we're gonna get this done with the, with Fund Forty-Six money approval. Right, I mean.
Let's get more information on the locker room.
So give it, so that's, so give it a moment.
Next, yeah.
And then we'll.
Maybe Roger can get some concrete bids for us.
I will, Roger's up at three o'clock this morning, so I gave him, certainly gave him permission to leave as soon as the court team meeting was done. But, yeah, he will continue to work on this, he can bring information back on some of these other things. You know, I can, I can have him get me the information on how many companies out there provide this kind of service, you know, what were the bids, what are, or can we get more bids, and, you know, where can we turn next? I can certainly put him on some of that to bring more information back. We know it needs to be done, it's just a matter of when will it get done and, and who will end up doing the work.
And the board just thinks thirty thousand dollars is an awful lot of money to spend on the floor, right? Is the reason.
How much was spent on the boys' floor?
It was, wasn't it maybe about the same, less than that?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact number, but again, that included the removal.
Right.
Which was, that's.
I mean, I'm not saying it has to be, I'm saying that when this building was constructed, the, the boys locker room was, was larger than the girls locker room. I pointed that out, but it didn't matter.
And we got a bigger one than that, we won't take it. We got.
So. I don't know, but that's not the subject we're gonna. Wait, no, hold on, so second, sorry, second thing is, with the questions about safety with the gravel parking lot and the bleachers, are, is, did we decide that Roger's gonna, are we, I mean, we're requesting an actual quote on. Quote items? Making the bleachers safer with railings and steps or?
To your point, I mean, if you're gonna explore the bleachers, you shouldn't be, I would think, you shouldn't be painting anything in the gym, be it the floor or the walls, until the bleachers are taken care of.
I think if you had to, Mitch, just that Mitch knows they need to explore it, because we need some kind of monetary amount.
I have, I have a ballpark price.
I'm not saying they should approve anything, but I wanted to just make sure that.
I have a ballpark price on retrofitting some steps and, they call them the P rails, so it looks like a giant P that is the handrail to get from one. I've got a ballpark price from Roger, we just had a bleacher inspection, and that company was going to get him a price for new bleachers with walkways and railing. He does not have that yet, but I can email out that price for retrofitting what we have, steps and railing.
Versus new.
Versus new.
Because if you have, if you have basically aisles, what you're talking about.
Correct.
That's gonna cut down on the seating in that gym.
Yeah, we would lose, I think, the number was around two-hundred, I thought Roger had said. Essentially, you'd lose two-hundred seats in the gym for putting in stairways.
Yeah, which, I have to give the seating capacity of the WIA every season or update it, and every time we lose seats, there's potential of not having certain tournaments.
We don't make much on the anyway, so what's the difference? We don't make much on the tournament in a way.
True, but it's good for our kids to not have to travel.
I agree, you can't put in.
Okay, we're moving on to credit card statement.
I move that we approve the credit card statement and approve our bills.
Do we have a second to that one? I'll second it, thank you.
Did you just, did you just motion this?
Yes.
For credit card.
I mean, I got some things here, I didn't have any. I, I just gotta point out with bills, again, some receipts were not sent here, you know? We were told that wasn't gonna happen anymore. And, for example, Susan Calhoun will send receipts, okay? And then, I didn't understand the two-hundred-and-four dollars for donuts. I just like, what the heck was that?
They were bailed.
No.
Two-hundred-and-four dollars for donuts might have been a reward.
They're a reward for the high school, for the state report.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and middle school also did that.
Middle school, I think, would have been in December, because they did theirs in November, we did ours in December.
Yeah.
That's only a hundred on this.
They need to pay for that.
And then money, and then money would have been run through, but it wouldn't come out of a fund ten account. And that money was provided out of a fund, you know, sixty or.
And what's a holiday T-shirt for employees? It was like nine-hundred dollars.
Holiday shirts for the students, probably.
Yeah, but I think they, they pay for them and then they reimburse, right?
Correct, it was the ugly sweater, T-shirt that the all staff, because they wanted one order, so.
What is the OTC brand's demand?
Over the counter? Oh, a credit card?
So we usually get a break out of all these, which the staff doesn't.
Or a credit rating company.
Okay.
It was a class of. Classical side.
So it's books?
Uh, classroom.
Is that it, you're paying for that?
I don't know.
I thought it was a I.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah, but can you ask, answer why we're paying for Saad, January thirteenth, uh, three thousand and seven? Is that, is that to save money or something?
That was.
Pays thirty.
The, that is, the boost, well, it's back, the baseball boosters have reimbursed the school district.
Oh.
To pay for that. It was Saad, that was laid down in the fall of the year, we just got the bill now.
I see.
And they're paying for it now, but this was at the baseball field.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't wanna be putting Saad down in the scoring ground, I guess.
No, answer all my questions, thanks.
Charity communications, I'm assuming that's a monthly?
Yes, with internet.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions on the bills? We'll go back to yours after this. Or did you something you can have him do?
Okay, I'll second the motion, the twenty head.
I think Gary did it, we'll hear it, sorry.
Yeah, we have a second, and. Call a question, please.
Dahl?
Yep.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stepas?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Bastin?
Okay, can I have one more?
Sure.
Sorry, one more thing about the project with the gravel parking lot, okay? It sounds like there's a question about whether we need to save it for future track and field projects? And can we, can we get that map out and, or that master plan out and decide whether that's something the district wants?
We have a five, ten year plan and whether.
I think you would, you would need to decide if you're gonna break your co-op and start your own track program and hire your own track coaches and then have the facility in order to do that.
Well, I just wanted to complete the argument, you know, because we're deciding whether to pave the gravel lot, um, which I think is a reasonable debate, we're, you know, and then we're wondering whether we need to save it for some other usage and if that's not a realistic plan in the next couple of decades, then.
Yeah, I don't see us having our own independent track program here.
I don't.
Gravel will put the lights up. I, I think gravel's.
Look, we have a track. That's what I'd rather not need, our own track program. Doc would be more than willing to, to use our track instead of us mooching off them.
I see, you think they would.
Just like we wanna do on the track.
I'd wanna spend all that money.
Why would you wanna spend all that money on the track?
But you also have to kind of be careful because, um, remember, there, there was a big meeting about our co-ops. And they wanted to, they, they were seriously thinking about not renewing the co-ops. They want us to start taking more responsibility.
So that's, that's a reasonable expectation.
Right, but I mean, if we would put in a track, then we would have things over here.
Don't we also add to their numbers so that they go up division?
And, and we pay for our share of the co-op. Yeah, we pay for shares of the co-op, I get, I get a bill at the end of the.
We still stick the money into the track program, the baseball program would not be very true about that and I think they'd have a reason to say something.
So here's one layout that they had put forward that shows, um, long jump, discus shot put, potential pole vault pit. It's not on here, but I did, I do remember them talking about like high jump.
High jump.
Black topping, a spot out here for high jump.
Right.
Kind of a similar look, long jump along section of land with parking lot, shot discus pole vault.
And you'll get the big picture, it's, and, and I'm not saying that the school needs to spend whatever it's gonna take to put in a track program, but the, the Gridiron Club built up the football field for us and maybe there can be a, a track program club developed and.
Yeah, I don't think there's room though behind the field to get a, a track going on it. Besides the, between McGuire's and the football field, there ain't room for track there.
This was, this was all engineered here.
It, it is measured out.
That new cement pad has got your own part of it to have a track in it.
That's where we put that cement pad, so we did go all far enough so if that was ever coming.
So this heavily. But I don't know. And twenty-six kids in a track program is nothing to sneeze at. I don't know how many millions of dollars it would be to put.
It, it would be a mil, uh, probably a million dollars to have a.
Eight lane track.
Yeah.
Oh, no way. Hundred and forty would cost me for just a baseball field. Hundred and forty two would pay from here to there.
What do you think football field costs?
Larry, it's, you don't put regular blacktop.
I don't understand.
Yeah, Doc, Doc will just stock a ton of money into redoing their track. But the original cost on the track might have been at that point about maybe, I think it was eight hundred thousand?
How many years ago was that?
Yeah.
Almost twenty-seven years ago.
Steph's starting line?
Four or five.
Donations by the Steph's family?
Totally. So just, I mean, I, I like, I like any of them.
If you don't, if you don't wanna competitive track, yes, you could, you could scale, scale it down.
Put a walking track.
But if you want a competition track with the correct surface and all the lines and everything, you are going, and you know, the whole jump pit and everything, you're, you're talking a lot of money.
And nobody was, I'm thinking we're gonna spend this money on a new track.
Right.
But this plan is out.
Right, right.
And it was, it was approved by a board.
Yeah.
We could chew up the laptop for twenty years if we're gonna have a track. If they wanna use it as a pole vault over there. Just chew it up.
I have been here on days where Mr. Schmitz or Mr. Schulpel have kids all running in the parking lot.
Right.
They'd be happy to.
Hang a track.
Yeah, I, I, I would love it, community would love it.
They would love it, yeah. It would be a good addition. And I hate to take it off the case, I can't because we're, we're gonna spend seven to eight.
I don't know, my question is, is it on any table right now? To have a track?
That was approved by a board.
Right.
Only the football portion of it, preliminary, it was designed to have a track.
And, and everything is still there, everything is still there, other than using the discus and shot and parking lot.
If this board wants to build a track in the next five years, I would say, well, don't pave that lot. Or, you know, it's, a track doesn't really affect that lot. I mean, really the question is, is the board, is this board gonna put a shot put and discus field in the gravel parking lot in the next twenty years?
I'll ask you a question, Doc. Will Mineral Point community, the city council planning, the planning committee group allow a corporation like Vortex to come in and locate a Mineral Point? And if they do, things will change in Mineral Point.
Never happened.
They did not.
Well, they don't, they didn't put water and sewer to a lot?
It didn't happen.
Yeah, and it didn't happen.
So there's a lot of questions to be answered.